Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. The microphones are on, the TVs are rolling, and we kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno.
Here.
Burkhardt.
Here.
Clements.
Here.
Ruby.
Here.
Caven.
Here.
Kilburg.
Here.
Maladra.
Here.
Marks.
Here.
McGowan.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
We are all present, very exciting. Let me begin tonight's meeting with a shout-out to somebody all of you know, his name is Lieutenant Todd Loomis with the fire department. Over the weekend, Todd celebrated his 30th anniversary with the city of Geneva. Isn't that wild? And I know he never watches these things, that's why I'm saying it, so congratulations to Lieutenant Loomis. Very exciting. Chief, could I trouble you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the Thine of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Our first order of business, ladies and gentlemen, under item 3A is a Public Works Department presentation, and we have the distinguished Superintendent of Electric Works, Mr. Hale Wright with us this evening. He's going to provide us a 30,000-foot review and perspective of our electric utility. Welcome, Hale.
Thank you.
Hale, quickly, how many years has it been for you?
Thirty-two? Thirty-three?
Thank you for the coffee.
I don't know.
Isn't that something?
It goes by way too fast.
When Hale came, we were still just doing this with wood and stuff, making fire. Okay, Mr. Wright, it's all yours.
Ready? Okay. All right, so I get the...
Bruno, you got a problem with that?
Yeah, thank you very much.
God help us all. Okay. Edit the tape, Pete.
Regal you with all things electric tonight. So, there's so many things we could cover, we're going to start off here with just the mission statement, and that's what governs everything we do in the electric utility. We approach all of our tasks and all of our goals with this in mind. It's simple, it's easy to understand, and it's easy to remember: serving the community with reliable power at the lowest possible rates. So, things that we can do, or things that we do do, that we use that, and things that we bring to the city council: power supply, which is what we're going to talk about tonight; budgeting, you get that every year; rates, we'll be doing that in the next couple of months; and operations. We do all that with how we can do it as cheap as possible with the highest reliability. Power supply. I stole this out of the budget presentation from last year. You can see purchased power, 70% of our budget, so it's the big part of what we do from a monetary standpoint. Power supply, we can break down into five entities. We have a diversified portfolio. NIPA, we're going to kill you with acronyms tonight, but NIPA is 18.2 million, or 61% of the total dollar amount. PJM, it's an RTO, 6.7 million. Nextera, 3 million. Waste Management Renewable Energy, 1.1, and the Geneva Generation Facility at $900,000. So, we'll go through each of those individually. NIPA, Northern Illinois Municipal Power Agency, it was established in 2004. It's made up of three members: Geneva, Batavia, and Rochelle. NIPA owns a 7.6% undivided interest in the Prairie State Energy Campus. It's a project-based organization, and Prairie State is its only project. Prairie State is a 1,600-megawatt coal-fired generating station in Marissa, Illinois, which is down south. Prairie State also has a coal mine associated with it, known as Lively Grove. Lively Grove represents 30 years of coal reserves that have already been purchased. We just have to mine them out of the ground. Those three members, Geneva, Batavia, and Rochelle. Geneva has 35 megawatts, approximately 29% of NIPA's obligation; Batavia at 55 megawatts, or 46% of NIPA's obligation; and Rochelle at 30 megawatts. We have power sales agreements. As communities, we don't own Prairie State. NIPA owns Prairie State. We just have power sales agreements with NIPA, gave NIPA bonding authority to enter into purchase of 120 megawatts of Prairie State. Got a picture. I think most of you have been there. For those of you that haven't, it's a very large facility, about $5 billion. Fully a billion dollars of that went into the back end of Prairie State to clean up the emissions. It is, I'm sure, the cleanest coal plant in Illinois, and one of the top coal plants in the United States. So, as emissions go and cleanliness for coal, it should be the last one standing. So, I don't think we're going to be building any more of them. Any questions on NIPA and Prairie State? Okay, and we'll go on to PJM. PJM is a regional transmission organization. PJM stands for Pennsylvania, Jersey, and Maryland. Started off as three states, it's now 13 states and the District of Columbia. It operates the transmission system, provides a framework for buying, selling, and billing within the zone. It assures that there's reserved capacity. It does all of the billing for all of the entities that own the transmission system, and it operates that transmission system. So, we don't pay ComEd for the use of their distribution system, we pay PJM, PJM pays Energy and capacity from Prairie State and Nextera flow through PJM to Geneva. That'll become more important later. Give you a picture of what PJM looks like. It's mostly out east, but ComEd owns other, Exelon owns other utilities out east. And in addition to ComEd, when they joined PJM, we got PJM West in Illinois, which is that little northeastern section of Illinois up there. Prairie State, however, is located in southern Illinois, and that is in MISO. Give you a picture of what MISO looks like. They're actually bigger than PJM, and that stands for Mid-Continent Independent System Operator. And we have to get our energy from Prairie State into MISO, through MISO, into PJM, through PJM, to Geneva. So, there's a fair amount of work and effort that goes into all that. Tell you a little bit about Nextera Energy. Nextera is a clean energy services company, at least that's how they bill themselves. We have a contract with Nextera for 5x16 energy. It goes through 2024. 5x16 means five days a week, 16 hours a day. It essentially provides us with on-peak power, five days a week, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. The size of the block of energy that we buy from them varies month to month. In April 2019, we were buying a 10-megawatt block. In August of this year, it was 35 megawatts. We call this contract a hedge. Hedges provide rate stability, but they provide their cost. So, they don't typically save you money, they provide you with stability. However, during the polar vortex of 2014, when rates went up to $8,000 a megawatt hour, this hedge saved the ratepayers about $800,000. So, that rate stability can be very lucrative at times. Nextera's energy resource portfolio is predominantly clean, mostly wind, solar, and nuclear. I've got a flyer from them that I blew up here. You can see there's 70% wind, 10% solar, and 14% nuclear. And while we don't buy the recs that go with the power, I do feel comfortable saying that we're sourcing a good deal of our energy from Nextera from clean resources. We get about 20% of our energy requirements from Nextera. Now, we're going to get into a graph that gets a little more detailed here. See if I can pull up the tool. Laser pointer on both screens at the same time. So, this area down here, this represents a month of data, and you can see I've got, the blue line is our resources, and there's a line that pretty much runs straight across here, and everything below that would be Prairie State, Prairie State's base load. These bar graphs or bars that come up, that's the Nextera contract. They're five days a week and 16 hours a day. The one that's missing here is a holiday, I believe that was the Fourth of July. These big gaps here are the weekends. See, anytime the red line is below the blue line, we have more resources than we do load. So, we are being credited in the PJM market for the energy resources that we've put into that market, but that we're not using. Anytime we are seeing the red line above the blue line, we are short in the market, is what they call that. We have fewer resources than we have load, so we are buying market-based power, market-based rates at that time. That all shows up in the bill from PJM. So, we do buy a small amount of power from PJM. I'm going to show it to you in another format. This is called a load duration curve. This covers a full year. You can see for very few hours up here, we're actually running around 80 megawatts. The meat of the time, we're in that 40-megawatt, 50, 30-megawatt range, and for very few hours, we got down as low as maybe 10 megawatts. Probably was an outage going on on a light-load day to get that low. The majority of that area under the curve is underneath the blue line. That's provided by NIPA through essentially Prairie State, it's base load generation, and it's the majority of the energy and capacity that we have, that we need. Give you another look at it here with some of the resources filled in. So, you can see NIPA contract. See, Nextera provides 70 to 80 gigawatt-hours, that's intermediate and peaking power. Spot market purchases, that's when the red line goes above the blue line, and we're buying out of the market, and that's about 11 gigawatts. We don't show GGF on here because it doesn't really lend itself to this graph. It runs some hours, it doesn't run other hours. We just run it more as a peaking to avoid the capacity. So, if we think we're setting a peak day, and that peak day, if you remember what the PJM territory looked like, it could be hot out east, and that's setting our peak day. So, our loads may be high one day when they're low, and we may be running the generation when loads are low, but it's hot out there. So, it doesn't really lend itself to being shown on this graph, but it's in there as WMRE, Waste Management Renewable Energy. Every couple of years, I come in front of you to talk about the waste management contract. We buy power that's generated off the methane gas that's produced in the landfill through decomposition. It's, since the landfill is closed, the amount of methane it's producing is beginning to fall off. We used to be a good 10% for years and years, now we're coming down to about 8% energy we're getting out of them. They have put some smaller wells into service just to boost their methane collection, and so hopefully that will keep it going for quite a while to come. I don't know that it's going to bring the capacity up, but I think it'll sustain it for a lot longer now. Now, we're going to talk about behind the meter. Behind the meter, that's energy capacity that does not come through PJM or through ComEd. We don't have to pay losses, and we don't have to pay transmission on that. So, for Waste Management Renewable Energy in that contract, it's worth as much as $100,000 a year to our ratepayers in savings by not having to pay those losses and those capacity and transmission charges. The energy is considered green energy, and it's eligible for renewable energy credits. Geneva doesn't currently purchase those renewable energy credits, so we can't say we use the green energy, but it never makes it off our system, so we are sourcing power from a green resource. And at 8% for that, and the 20% we showed you for Nextera, we're over 25%, sourced from clean resources. However, we can't say we're using green energy legally. Give you a picture of what that looks like. It's out in the landfill, it's just a building out there. It's got a couple stacks. They would have to burn and flare that methane anyway, because the methane is more dangerous to the environment if they don't burn it than it is if they do. So, they might as well make electricity with it, and Geneva gets the benefit. Geneva Generation Facility. It's constructed in 2004 and entered commercial operation in 2005. We floated an $18-million bond for substation and distribution system modifications and plant construction. Those bonds should be paid off in 2022, and then the utility will be debt-free if we don't bond for something else before that. Provides both energy and capacity behind the meter, so again, it doesn't come through PJM. We avoid transmission and losses on it, and that facility saves the ratepayer between $1 million and $3 million each year, depending on PJM market prices. Those prices for capacity are set on a three-year-ahead auction, so we know what they are going out for the next three years, price-wise, but every year, there's an auction for the third year out. Geneva works with the Indiana Municipal Power Agency to bid and schedule the energy and capacity from the Geneva Generation Facility into the PJM market, to the benefit of all of our customers, and they've done a great job. Costs us, in 2018, I believe it cost us about $890,000 to operate the facility, so if it's saving us $3 million, and we netted, we're still over $2 million in savings. Give you a picture of that from the outside, and we'll take another look at it from the inside. They're large, you can see the man on the left-hand side of the screen. They're two-story-tall engines. We talked about the head a couple weeks ago that we needed to have replaced, and that's what one of these is. 16 cylinders each, so 16 heads per engine, five engines, there's 80 of them out there. So, that's what we're buying a spare for. That's the end of the presentation. Comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Hale. Enjoyed the presentation upfront. Thank you for pronouncing "nuclear" properly.
You're welcome.
Prairie State, we've got, what, 22-years commitment with that yet, something like that?
Our commitment, bonds go out through December 2041.
2041. And do I have it right, Nextra's our green-sourced...
Nextera is a 5x16 contract.
Right.
And that goes out through 2024.
And that relationship, that doesn't impede us in any way doing any green power behind the meter here?
No, absolutely not. One thing we do need to consider: overall, Geneva has more resources than it has load, if you look at it total overall basis. So, we're long in the market. Any energy, additional energy that we acquire, either through building our own or buying into green energy resources, is going to be something that we're just going to buy it, and then we're going to sell it again. Or you could say we're buying that and we're selling some other resource. It's all on paper, but the reality is, we have more than we need right now.
Yeah, gathered from the... And the landfill is exclusive to Geneva, is that right? Nobody else is using that?
Nobody else is using that. There have been times when we've bargained really hard with them, where they've looked at maybe wheeling across our system and selling outside, but so far, they haven't done that.
That's it. Thanks again.
Sure.
Alderman Kilburg.
Just a couple of questions. So, first, I know there were a number of startup issues as it related to Prairie State's. Would you just give a sort of a general assessment of where Prairie State's is as it relates to its financial performance?
Prairie State has been running on all cylinders, doing nothing but getting better for the last four or five years. We've seen a decrease in the rates we're paying to NIPA every year for at least the last four years, due to the improved performance of Prairie State. Management team that got down there now is just...
Good job.
Doing an excellent job.
Good.
And they've got plans to improve it every year going forward as well. I've got nothing but great things to say about them.
I know one of the investors, Batavia, had some second thoughts as it related to Prairie State's, in that there were changes within Batavia's energy requirements that caused them to sort of reassess where they were. Any update on our partners in Prairie State's, and where they might stand as it relates to the overall involvement of the three members?
I'll hit that at a real high level, but Batavia spent a lot of money, upwards of maybe $1 to $2 million, trying to get out of their Prairie State obligation.
This was four or five years ago.
Correct. And what they ended up doing, I believe, is they bought too much of the resource, they saw their loads growing, they said, "This is, this looks like it's going to be a wonderful project, and we will grow into these loads." Well, then, the economy took a hit in 2008, and actually, their loads, our loads, the electric industry in general, LED lighting, those loads have gone down. We peaked, I think, in 2007 at, 2006 at 92 megawatts. Last year, we peaked at 82 megawatts. So, we've lost a substantial amount of our load, yet we've got all these resources out there that we bought planning for the future. So, that's why we're a little long in the market right now. We've got more than we need. Unfortunately, Batavia's got a whole lot more than they need. With your cost of dead service, Prairie State's one of our most expensive resources. Without dead service, it would be probably our cheapest resource. So, that dead service, that's what they wanted to get out from under.
I see.
And they weren't able to do it. The contracts are pretty much ironclad, is what they found out.
Good. Well, thank you, Hale.
You're welcome.
Alderman McGowan.
Hi, Hale, thank you for all this information.
Sure.
Can you tell us a little bit more about those renewable energy credits from, I believe it's the landfill? It's like we could get credit for that, but we don't. What were you saying about that earlier?
Okay. Renewable energy credits, it's a way to provide incentives to developers of renewable energy to build those facilities. It provides a cost offset for them. When you, through the state programs that are available now, if you were to put solar power on your roof, those renewable energy credits could be sold and help offset the cost of that installation. However, green energy credits are a manufactured piece of paper, it's a legal term. If you don't buy the green energy credits, you can't say you use green energy. We source from a green energy resource, but in order to say that we are truly buying green power, we have to buy the recs. We could go out and buy recs to cover 100% of our load, and we could say we are 100% green energy. It's, I'm not sure it's the spirit of the thing, but it's something we could do. If we do that, we get the bragging rights, and our rates go up to cover those costs, and we're not supplying power at the lowest possible cost. So, at that point, we'd probably want to consider changing the mission statement a little bit.
Okay, actually, that reminds me of smaller companies that want to be certified organic.
Yep.
And they can't, it's just this huge cost to them, and they are certified organic, but in order to be able to put that on their labeling, it costs a fortune. It just reminds me of the same kind of scenario, so...
It is.
Thank you.
So, we are sourcing more than 25% of our needs, and the state of Illinois is trying to get to 25% by 2025. Currently, it looks like they're on target to hit about 10%. We're already there. We just can't say it.
Yeah. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes? Alderman Burkhardt. Yes?
Yeah, you mentioned Prairie State, which I'm so glad I got to tour that facility a few years ago. It was memorable, for sure. It was probably one of the last coal plants that'll be built, you mentioned, or one of the last standing, you think. I mean, so where is the trend going in energy production? Do you think it'll continue to be more green power, or...
For dispatchable resources, things that you can count on whenever the wind isn't blowing and the sun isn't shining, that's all going to natural gas right now. Like I said, I don't think we're going to see another coal plant being built, at least in my lifetime. There is a lot of green resources in the pipeline, but right now, they are a very small piece of the pie. They've got a long ways to go.
Is there anything we should be doing to prepare? I know we have Prairie State for another 20-some years, but what, how do you, I mean, the market, I know, didn't we used to get very cheap energy from Wisconsin or something I heard about?
And...
And that was a long-term contract, and how do you, it's hard to predict the future, obviously. Obviously, if we grew our demand, that would help us on the other end, right? You said we have really more load than we need, but so...
I'm a great supporter of the southeast development. If we can grow that and bring more load to the city, that's nothing but good for the electric utility. To answer your question, maybe 20 years out, I don't think my crystal ball's that good.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, somebody else will be looking at that.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else for the dais? Hale, just, if I may, just, I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm genuinely interested. Since you arrived in Geneva 32 years ago, and today, what's the biggest change you've seen in the utility itself with respect to operations, leveraging, hedging, et cetera? Now, you've seen the rapid growth, and you've seen multiple downturns.
There has been so much change, and you're right. When I started 30-some years ago, we were sitting around a very antiquated computer terminal, wondering if we were going to be able to hold the load at 28 megawatts. Now, I have substations that can handle 28 megawatts, so our load is growing substantially many times. I would say that sophistication in the electronic monitoring, the ability to track all that we do and do it all, have it at your fingertips, be able to turn the power on and off, and do that right from your desk, that finding faults, just all of the things that go into operations, and the ability to know what's going on at any given instant, that's probably been the biggest change, and it's still not as far as today's instantaneous society would like to see it.
Sure.
We still don't know for sure, when the power goes out, what it is, and sometimes we get the power back on before we ever find the problem. We just isolate an area that has no load, and we know there's a problem out there, and the power's back on. We find it later.
Anyone else? Alderman Clements.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. It just popped into my head, you had mentioned how, you know, you've gone to LED light bulbs and other energy-saving measures, have, you know, shown the load has come down from its peak of 92 megawatts to 82. And I'm just wondering, you know, with the rollout of new technologies, and specifically, like 5G, if I understand, when 5G rolls out all over the place, those towers are going to be kind of peppered throughout a lot of areas. Are those large consumers of electrical power, will we see a big increase in our load from a 5G rollout, or will it just be negligible? Or do you not know?
I don't think there'll be a large increase in load from 5G rollout. I think what I would like to see is Geneva do, somehow get into the car-charging side of it. There's a lot of energy to be sold there. It's a green initiative, and if we can jump on that and promote it and sell energy for car-charging, but right now, they want us to give it away. It should all be free someday.
There seems to be a magic number for charging a car. Anything above a buck 75 seems to ward off those who want to use it.
Yeah.
Which is fascinating. And to your point, there's many organizations that say, "Yes, we'll fund the..." There seems, there seems to be a magic number for charging a car. Anything a buck, anything above a buck 75 seems to ward off those who want to use it.
Yeah.
Which is fascinating. And to your point, there's many organizations say, yes, we'll fund the EV station for you, but the power's on you.
Yep.
And that becomes a policy discussion, whether we want to quote subsidize someone charging their vehicle when all the other ratepayers are paying for it.
Maybe we subsidize business owners putting those in. I don't know.
Anyone else? It's, it's a fascinating business, man. God, Lord.
It is.
Nuclear, nuclear? Is there a future beyond what currently exists? Or the politics such that it'll never happen?
Nuclear is an incredible technology. I, I wish it had more acceptance in the public. I think something's going to need to change for, for it to, for the, for the NIMBY syndrome to, to allow that to happen.
Sure. Has anyone here been to the Braidwood facility? Unbelievable, isn't it? Just incredible. Anything else from Mr. Wright? Thank you, sir, very, very much.
Welcome.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Any amendments offered by any member of the council? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered enacted upon with one motion. Is there a motion? Alderman Marx makes that motion and Alderman Swanson makes the second. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Berghardt.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Haven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Item five, the omnibus agenda passes unanimously. We skip down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills, $843,981.68.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in our packets and on the city's website. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Any additional questions or comments other than those that have been answered via electronic correspondence earlier today? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Berghardt.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Haven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
The motion to pay the bills was passed unanimously. We skip down to item 12, since all committee of the whole items of business were under the consent. Item 12A is to consider resolution number 2019-83 authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the state of Illinois, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, and the city of Geneva for Ridgewood subdivision drainage improvements in the amount of $150,000. Is there a motion? Motion by McGowan, seconded by, was that Bruno? Alderman Bruno? Mr. McCready?
The item before you this evening here, in December 2018, staff submitted a funding request to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to install drainage improvements along certain portions of the Ridge subdivision. The city was awarded $150,000 to complete this project and so before you tonight, you have, you have the agreement here to formalize that contract and so staff may begin work on that. And I believe we have the correct staff here to answer any questions that you may have in addition to this.
Mr. Van Gescam's with us this evening to answer any questions regarding this matter. We have a motion by McGowan and a second by Bruno and Mr. Babac is here as well, the chief's here and of course Brenda Shor is here and Kathleen. Any questions or comments for either of that, or other member of that august group? Is this your item, Kathleen? I know it's not. Need some water, chief? We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Berghardt.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Haven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Item 12 passes unanimously, folks. We're at item 13, new business or public comment. Any new business from the dais? Anything at all? Mr. McCready, anything worth sharing? Excellent. A motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marx, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, folks. If there's no objection, shall we just jump over to the committee of the whole meeting? Whenever you're ready, Mr. Clerk, let me know. Our committee of the whole, our committee of the whole meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the council members are present. Item two is to approve special committee of the whole minutes from August 12, 2019 and regular committee of the whole minutes from August 19, 2019. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Berghardt.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes as presented? All in favor, please say aye of approving these minutes?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Items of business, item 3A is to consider approval of special event application, including a request for use of public rights of way and city services for the Monster Mash 5K and Kids Dash on October 19, 2019.
So moved.
Packet.
Alderman Bruno and Alderman Berghardt, any questions or comments for Mr. Tavishenko? Any fear of monsters? Anyone going to run in this? Good God, what a Are you going to run? You never know, what the heck? It's cool by then, nice temperatures. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 3A passes unanimously. Item 3B is to consider approval of a special event application, including a request for use of public rights of way and city services for the Ooh La La Chocolate 5K Run and Walk and Half Marathon on November 3, 2019.
So moved.
Motion by the Chocolater, Mr. Bruno, seconded by Clements. Questions or comments? This has really become quite the event. You know, afterward, everyone gets free hot chocolate at Old Chocolate Kitchen. So what I do, I just put a bib on, pretend I ran and go get the, it's awesome. I can hear you breathing out there. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes item 3B unanimously. Item 3C is to consider approval of a draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Jetco Limited for Dodson Street Water Tower painting at a not-to-exceed cost of $579,991.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Marx, Alderman Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Clements. There's some detailed material in your packet, pretty cool stuff. Any questions for the superintendent, Mr. Van Gescam? I would like to perhaps add an amendment that the images of the aldermen in that neighborhood also be on the water tower. Dyes for lack of a second. Alderman McGowan.
No, okay. I don't know what you're talking about just now, but I did want to point out, well, I did want to ask, is the graphic that's included in the packet with the word Geneva, is that exactly what will appear on the water tower once it's painted?
You might notice, come on up, Mr. Van Gescam, you might notice it's consistent with the gateway signs as well, the same font style.
Exactly. Yes, that's what will be on the, the tower itself.
Okay. I know this is silly, but it really bothers me that the A is like big at the end of Geneva.
As the mayor pointed out, that's the way that the entrance signs are and so we went with that design.
Alrighty. And there's no way to change it?
I, it would have to, I would have to speak to the city administrator because I worked with her on, on getting this through, so.
It's not a big deal at this point, just, I don't like the big A at the end. That's just me. Thank you.
And forgive me, Mr. McCready, I should have turned to you for a detailed review prior to taking the, anything you want to add?
I, you know, I would just add that there were a few questions about this that were covered in electronic correspondence earlier, but that this was, this project, our, this water tower was last painted in 1995, so it's
Lasted a good long time.
That's amazing. Alderman Marx. How many water towers do we have?
Uh, three.
Is it three?
Three.
And, and two of them recently, this is
Correct. Correct. This is, this is the last of, obviously, the three.
In, in a few years, yeah. We've been, it seems like every other year we've had one of these for the last
Just timing-wise, that's how it works, so, that's all.
But this is the last one, then, that's
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion, which is item 3C, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item 3D, consider approval of draft ordinance amending Title IV Business and License Regulations, Chapter 13, Cigarette and Tobacco Dealers, Section 1 through 4, and Title VI Police Regulations, Chapter 3, Minors, Section 3, Tobacco Regulations of the Geneva City Code. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Mr. McCready, I did not forget you this time. Again, my apologies.
No problem at all. Earlier this year, the city council directed the police department to draft amendments to the current ordinance. However, prior to drafting these changes, the governor signed Tobacco 21, under 21 legislation. The requested amendments to the ordinance before you tonight generally mirror those that were signed into state law earlier. And then we have Chief Passerelli here tonight to answer any additional questions you may have about the ordinance, proposed ordinance before you. And again, several questions about this, which were shared via, and responses shared via electronic correspondence earlier today and posted to the city's website.
Questions on the dais for either Mr. McCready or the chief? Alderman Bruno, Alderman Swanson?
Really just a comment, I think some of that electronic communications, correct me if I misremember this, but we do do stings on underage tobacco sales and was I right? Eight of 14 businesses?
May I ask Chief Passerelli to elaborate?
Yeah, that is correct. The last time that we did a compliance check in December of 2018, eight of 14 establishments sold to those under 18 years of age.
That sounds like a really terrible record.
It was a bad number, yes.
So, what's the percentage on underage alcohol sales when we do those?
Those, we've really had most compliance. I, I don't think we've had any violations
Several years.
Several years since we've had any violations on the alcohol end of things.
Hopefully it'll be better next time.
I hope so.
Thanks.
Alderman Swanson.
Yes, this question is for the chief as well. Given that we're fining individuals, underage individuals for possession $50 and we're fining retailers for selling to minors $50, my question is, should the fine for retailers be higher so that we discourage that type of behavior? And second part, could we have escalating fees for second and third offenses? And, and I'm sort of tying into what Alderman Bruno said, eight out of 14 is a pretty terrible percentage and perhaps part of that is because the fine is so minor.
Sure.
And it's kind of a slap on the wrist. We, we don't do stings frequently. So, so my question is, would, would it help if the fine was greater to the retailer and we had escalating fines for second and third offenses?
Sure.
More in line with perhaps 100, 250, 500, in line with a neighboring city of ours.
Sure. I mean, I think we were conservative when we proposed this based on our earlier discussion in February. State statute escalates from 200 to 400 to 800 for a retailer that sells to a minor or someone under 21 now. St. Charles, our neighboring community, is, as you said, 100, 250, 500. Again, we were conservative. I don't disagree. So as, you know, we proposed a conservative number, but if the council felt that that should be something that escalates or is a different fine for the retailers that sell versus the minors, because that's really where, I think we looked at a loophole in the state law was, there was no fine for a minor or someone under 21 who was in possession of electronic cigarettes and those kinds of things. But as a non-home rule community, we could be more restrictive than state law and so we thought that was an important aspect of it because these devices are already out there. And if there's no teeth to our ordinance to be able to hold those accountable who have them and continue to use them, I think that's an important aspect of this. But the fine, I would, I would obviously defer to the council of what you felt comfortable with in that area.
Could, could I make a motion to amend this resolution to increase those fines?
You certainly can.
And I'd, I'd like to do that. I would like to make them in, in line with our St. Charles partner, our neighbor and make it for $100 for the first offense to a retailer, 250 for a second, and I believe 500 for a third offense.
There's a motion on the floor to amend the ordinance, seconded by Alderman Ruby. Discussion on the amendment. Alderman Bruno.
While I'm absolutely in, in agreement that I think we should escalate it and more punitive fines for retailers violating this, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable, I guess if it's canned St. Charles language, a little uncomfortable writing the ordinance here for the dais, but I prefer that staff comes back to, with us with the new language.
On the amendment, ladies and gentlemen? Alderman McGowan.
So would these increasing fines just be limited to a calendar year, like January 1st through the end of December and then it would kind of start over again the following week?
No, I think it would just be, from the time that this ordinance was implemented, this was what would be in effect. So, once we, if we were ever to get to that third violation, it would be $500 for each, that violation, each subsequent violation.
And, Chief, can you refresh my memory? How many retailers do we currently have in the city that sell tobacco products?
15 licensed retailers right now.
Okay. And then, how often does the police department kind of spot-check those establishments?
We've been doing it about once a year. The state of Illinois used to have a grant that allowed us to do it up to three times per year. That grant went away, so it's a little more challenging, but we, we try and do it at least once a year.
So I think any businesses that were not found to be in compliance would know, the next, and they had to pay the initial fee, which would, which would be like $50, they would know that the following year, if the police department came around again to check on, to check on their compliance with the law, that that fine, you know, they would know, okay, if we get in trouble again for selling to anyone under 21, we're going to face this. They're going to know that ahead of time.
They should.
That they're going to have this like higher fine.
But there's always the opportunity to, or those complaints that come into us about tobacco products being sold to a minor, that we'll investigate outside of those normal compliance checks. So, we always try and follow up on those when someone calls one in to us.
Okay. I would be in favor of the motion made by Alderman Swanson and seconded by Alderman Ruby. I think it's a, it's a wise decision because otherwise it's just too easy for businesses to say, oh, we'll just, we'll just figure in this $50 a year fee if the police come around. It's not a big deal. So. Yeah, I think it's just, the ultimate goal is to keep young people safe and prevent young people from getting addicted to something before they're really, before their brains are developed enough to like make a better decision for themselves. So that's what I feel it's all about. around. It's not a big deal. So, yeah, I think it's just, the ultimate goal is to keep young people safe and prevent young people from getting addicted to something before they're really, before their brains are developed enough to like make a better decision for themselves. So that's what I feel it's all about. Thank you.
Alderman Clements, then Caven, then Bruno, unless there's someone else who wishes to speak for the first time.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification...
This is on the amendment.
Yes, thank you. Just for clarification, so the, the fines never reset. So if you have been busted three times, if you, if that same business gets busted five years from that third violation, that's the fourth violation, and it will be at the maximum fine?
Correct. That's my understanding of how that would work.
Correct, the way this is being...
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think that's fine. Thank you.
Alderman Caven?
Thank you. I'm just kind of curious, when you go do the compliance checks, when you have minors go in, I know it varies with how you do it as far as like alcohol sales and stuff go. Is it more of somebody at one of the establishments or at one of the stores just selling it to somebody who is under 18? Or is it somebody who's using some form of false identification when they go in there to be able to purchase whatever it is they're trying to get?
In the case of the compliance checks that we completed in December, they used their own identification, which was a valid state identification that showed them as under 18 years of age at the time. And in six of those instances, they checked their ID and still sold them the merchandise.
Okay, so it might be somebody who's just not looking close enough. I guess one of the only concerns that I have is, is a, is a business being penalized. And I know it, I think it's a, it's obviously going to be state law, and, you know, there needs to be teeth on both sides of it. But if somebody's purposely going out of the way to deceive somebody with a false identification or something that shows that they are of age, I know that if that's some of the products you're going to sell that, or alcohol, you need to be able to identify a real one from a fake one.
Sure.
And make sure that it's pretty legitimate. I guess that would be my only concern with having the escalating or the higher prices is just that if somebody's going that direction, now if it's just somebody who's being that careless, then they probably need the fine to be higher than...
Sure.
Higher than what it is.
Yeah, and this ordinance covers that in that you can't portray your age as older than, or 21 or older if you're not. So in those cases, we would do a thorough investigation, and it would be the person who's attempting to purchase that would...
Okay.
Have the consequences of the ordinance violation, not so much the retailer.
Very good. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again, chief. The, I, I can see how clean it would be as far as enforcing our, our own compliance check, very controlled environment. It seems like if you get a complaint outside of that, like, I don't know what that would look like, a parent saying, "Such and such sold this to my..."
Correct.
Children, that seems more problematic in terms of enforcement. Have we, have we gotten those and been able to enforce such?
What we usually do first off is our goal is to educate the retailer. So if we get a complaint such as that, we'll usually make a visit and stop in and say, we received this complaint. And then if it continues to be a problem, or we get word that it's an ongoing problem, then we'll take the steps needed to set up a compliance check in the appropriate way. And those take some time, you know? It's getting the youths who are willing to participate and making sure everything's done by statute takes a little bit of time, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else who has not yet spoken? Alderman Ruby?
Just a general question. Remind me again, the fines, where does the, where do the fines go and to what budget or fund? What happens? I think they would just go back to the general fund for the city, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Chief, for our edification and anyone else tuning in, the compliance checks for illegal tobacco sales are similar nature to the compliance checks for alcohol sales.
Correct.
The difference is that if someone is found to have sold tobacco, there is not a tobacco commission like there is an alcohol...
Correct.
...violation. So the ordinance violation is immediate.
Correct.
And it's paid, call it a day.
Correct.
If it's an alcohol violation, there is literally a hearing...
Yes.
Before this, not this body, but before the liquor commissioner...
Correct.
With attorneys on both sides, the chiefs, everything else. It's, it's quite the to-do.
Right.
And the fines are substantial.
Right.
Including, but not limited to, closure of alcohol sales for a period relevant to the, the violation. So I also know the answer to this question, but I'm hoping you'd share it. Oftentimes, when there is a violation charged, you know, I'll receive the phone call, you'll receive the phone call, and it's not, or not, it's oftentimes, oh my God, my staff person feels just terrible.
Right.
They looked at the ID, they didn't do the math right.
Correct.
And all you-know-what breaks loose.
Mm-hmm.
Of those who failed the compliance last time, I believe the majority of that was indeed that situation, as it were.
That's correct.
They're busy, they're checking, it looks good, whatever.
Right. And some of it is just education.
Sure.
You know, I think these establishments should educate their employees a little bit better and make sure that they're taking the time and understand the seriousness of taking time to look at identification and make sure that they're selling to, to the right age.
Are you aware of the state doing any compliance checks?
They have. The last tobacco compliance checks that were done here were done by the Illinois Liquor Commission because they've combined the tobacco end of things, and they called us and said, we're coming to town, we want to do them. We don't have a lot of say when they want to come into town. We, we obviously work with them. It's an important aspect of compliance in the city, but they were, that was their initiative last December.
On the amendment, ladies and gentlemen? We're going to take a roll call vote on the amendment. The amendment was offered by Alderman Swanson, seconded by, I believe, Alderman Ruby. That was to increase the fines to match our Friends to the North, which would be, I believe, $100 for the first violation, 250 for the second violation, 500 for the third violation. And that is on the retailer, exactly, yeah. Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, take a roll on the amendment.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
On the amendment, the vote is 10 affirmative, 0 nay votes. Now to the main motion as amended. Any questions on the main motion as amended? Effective date of this ordinance would be, actually, this is a committee meeting, so it'd have to go to next week's council meeting.
Correct.
Yes, Alderman Ruby?
Just a slightly unrelated question, so, I mean, anyway, though, oftentimes when you're at 7-Eleven or a liquor store, you know, there's a sign right there behind the counter that you see, if you were born before, if you were not born before this date, you cannot buy. Like, do you know what I'm referring to? Right, yes. Okay, so I'm, my question is, where do those signs come from? Do the, are the store owners? Those come from the Liquor Commission. Okay. And they provide them for the establishments. Okay, so perhaps the tobacco industry needs to come up with a sign? Sure. Yep. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Alderman Burkhart?
I guess I would say now, now that the age is 21, that should help, right?
It should help.
The sign, so it should be the same, so.
It should make it...
I mean, my only hesitancy on the amendment was that is a pretty big jump in fines for, and I don't think, obviously, we don't have any representation from our tobacco vendors here, but it will come before city council next week, and they're, of course, invited to come, to have their say if, if they want to, so, thanks.
On the main motion as amended? A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please say nay. Let the record show that the main motion as amended passed unanimously. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item four, new business. Back to the new business of the dais.